And good evening and welcome to the August 20th, 2020 meeting of the zoning board of appeals. For all tuned in, let's spend a couple of minutes reviewing how this meeting will be conducted. For the first two hours prior to 9:30 PM, we shall hold a public hearing on the applications that you have received a notice on and that were listed in the Norwalk hour for hearing. After the application is announced by the chair and read by the secretary, the applicant will come forward on the computer, state his or her name for the record, and then present the appeal or relief being sought. Please present those zoning issues that are relevant to the practical difficulties or hardship requiring this application. After you or your representative have spoken, those in favor will have the chance to be heard. After that segment, those opposing the application will have the opportunity to state their opposition for the record. In the case of an appeal, the zoning staff will have the opportunity to present their findings. Finally, after those against the application have spoken, the applicant and only the applicant will have the opportunity to rebut and respond to the issues raised. The hearing is then closed and the next application called. New applications will not normally be heard after 9:30 PM. As the board must discuss and act upon these applications, please note that no further public input is accepted at that time. You are welcome to stay tuned in for this portion of tonight's meeting. But should you decide to leave, you may contact the zoning office tomorrow to learn about our decision. Before we proceed tonight, I must remind you that this hearing is recorded and will become a matter of permanent public record. Additionally, all information, including photographs, drawings, and maps submitted to the board will become part of the public record and must remain with the board. The first case to be heard this evening is application 20-0716-02, Casino Care at Norwalk. Mr. Secretary?
Can I just interrupt for one second? Can we just confirm that we have someone here from Telesco Secretarial Services? I don't see a name up there that I recognize. Is there a Kim?
I'm Kim, but I'm not from the secretarial service now.
Do we know who that... About the 203-866-9502? Okay, all right, well, we'll go ahead without the secretary here. We'll just take some good notes and make sure this is recorded. Michelle, do you know how to make sure it's recorded? It just records it normally? Okay, all right, sorry for the interruption. Go ahead.
That's quite all right. Mr. Secretary, would you read the
The report, you got it.
The report.
Yeah, just to repeat the number.
I apologize.
2007-1602 Casino Care at Norwalk. Variances to reduce lot area coverage for proposed new parking lot expansion in D. Residence Zone. Currently, 75% lot coverage for buildings and parking. 84% coverage proposed. And the section is 118-360C. Property is located at 23 Prospect Street, District 1, Block 19, Block 13B. So as I said above, the request is for variance to expand the lot coverage for digital parking for an already non-conforming property. Numerous variances have been granted for expansions to this facility. Copies have included for the board, which we have read. The applicant states that they need additional parking for employees. The addition of the hemodialysis center seems to be contributing to this need. While onsite dialysis for patients only may be warranted, the site is already at maximum. If the board should grant, the variances should be conditioned that the dialysis is for residents of the facility only and not for the broader community. Okay.
Very good. Well, the applicant, please step forward and identify themselves.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Russell. I am the executive director for Casino Care at Norwalk. I am joined today with, by my consulting architect, Mr. Ira Shilton. I want to thank everyone for being here today. And Mr. Chairman, thank you for holding this meeting. The reason why we are before you today is just as member Andy has stated, we're seeking variance to reduce our lot area coverage for our newly proposed parking lot. And Mr. Chairman, with your permission, we have a presentation that we would like to share with the board.
Please. Go right ahead.
Okay, so, welcome, everybody. This is our presentation on behalf of Casino Care at Norwalk. Again, the reason why we're here today is to confirm a continuance of the special permitted use and the pre-existing non-conforming setbacks, building height and size. And also to, we're seeking a variance for the nursing home required amount to the amount that's reasonably able to fit onsite. Just a little bit about the presenters today will be myself, Jay Russell, and Ira Shilton, who works with Projects X.
Do you mind going into presentation mode so it's a little bit larger on the screen, please?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Ira, are you able to go into presentation mode?
I am in presentation mode.
Just maybe go up to where the slide shows.
You might be sharing the wrong screen. I don't know if you got more than one monitor.
Oh, yeah, I do have more than one monitor.
Yeah, just close it, swap the file, and then do it again. You should be fine.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, all good. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Ira, we're gonna go to the next slide.
So this talks a little bit about the current facility. And they do short and long-term residential services. It's a nursing home. They also do some rehabilitation services for some residents that come there with health concerns. They have a complete discharge plan for their rehabilitative services. And they have long-term care services that is administered by the nursing staff, the administrators, social workers, and caregivers onsite. It's a 150-bed facility. It's been there since 1971, which is six years before the current D-zone was conscripted where they exist. Within the D-zone, there's an exemption for the facility's benefit. And the facility remains onsite as is without expansion or change of enclosed area or footprint. Staffing ratio is approximately three residents per single staffer onsite during working hours. And they currently have between 50 and 60 staff onsite at any time during the maximum shift. Currently, there are 43 parking spaces, of which three are handicapped as a unit. An additional 20 spaces can be squeezed onto the site, and it's a really tight site. With the project, what we're appealing for is a variance that will bring us up to 23 spaces. With a list of requirement of 80 spaces, we would still be 17 spaces short of the list of requirement. For those of you familiar with Prospect Street, there is some congestion already on the street. We would hope this would relieve some of the congestion. So the applicant, I think I just explained most of this. The history of the zoning for the project has been largely that it was exempted at the initial conscription of the D-zone. So it has basically remained intact and in place as existing throughout the time. What we want is a continuance of the special permitted use with the non-conforming setbacks, the building height and size as is. And then we would like to get a variance, since when we add the 20 spaces that we're going to show you, we would still be 17 parking spaces short of the zoning listed requirements. Right now, this is the existing site plan. And as you can see, there's a light red dotted line that goes around there. There's a couple of areas where the building actually exceeds the setback. You can see along one wing, down in the lower right-hand corner, that tower building goes over the current setback requirements. And then on the building that's closest to Prospect Avenue, that building sits about four to five feet below street level. And there is a white fence around it screening it from street level, so you cannot see that wing. That's got a setback requirement that also infringes on the building. But like I said, the building is actually below grade at that point, even at the roof. This next slide shows where we want to add the 20 spaces of parking. Jay can confirm this, but we have an access and a stormwater sewage easement through our adjacent neighbor's property. And those easements were procured such that we can add 20 spaces to the rear of the building. The rear of the building would be at the top of a page where you see blue parking spaces. The civil engineer that we are working with has, was able to fit 20 parking spaces there. And the access drive will go through our easement parking lot that is for the apartment residences behind us. I can give you a count on the next slide. So the way we calculated it is 150 beds, and the workers employed one time, 60 onsite at any one time. So the required spaces came out to a total of 80 spaces. That is one per three beds of residence, so that's 50 spaces there. And half of all the staff has to be, have parking spaces, that means the in-spaces. The existing standard, as I said earlier, is 40, including the, with an additional three handicap spaces, that's 43. The proposed parking is 20 spaces. That gives us a total of 63 spaces. We're still 17 spaces short. The facility has already addressed a stormwater issue. We wanted to bring everybody and make everybody aware of that. Jay, the administrator of the facility, procured the services of a responsible stormwater construction company. And they have reconstructed the site drainage. If you look in the bottom left-hand corner, there's three pink arrows that bring all the site drainage to a point where the property, where the parking lot's gonna be. And then it's taken underground and an easement through that same apartment complex to Bedford Avenue. At Bedford Avenue, it is then connected to the system that is already in place.
And just to speak a little bit about this, Ira, and we have, as Ira stated, our neighboring facilities have recently done their parking lot over. And it was a requirement for them by the town to also upgrade their sewage management system. So we had plans of presenting to the board, as we're doing today. And we've made, we received recommendations that us also upgrading the stormwater management system while our neighbors were upgrading it at that time would be best. So we did install a stormwater management system that's up to code to the city of Norwalk's training manual.
Thank you, Jay. So on this slide, all I'm showing is that we are in a flood zone X by the FEMA zone map, which is we're outside of both the 100-year and 500-year flood plain. We're down the street from the hospital. So I think in that regard, we're in very good shape also. We filled out the zoning data chart. Hopefully, it's in your possession. If you do not have a copy of this PowerPoint, we can make that available to you.
Why don't you send it to the staff, and I'll make sure everybody gets it?
Okay, can I have that email address, please?
We don't need it right now. You could send it to me tomorrow, just for the record, so we have it, okay?
Okay, very good.
Jay has my email. Thank you.
I believe that completes our presentation. And I want to thank you personally for giving us the time. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Jay for a couple of minutes, and then I'll...
Mr. Chilton, before you leave us, I have a number of questions.
Sure.
Okay, I assume that the new parking will be accessed from Bedford Street?
That's correct.
Okay, it does not show that very well on your site plan.
Okay, it's going through the neighbor's property on an easement. We can show that in the site plan.
I would request that. Is there going to be any effort made to provide any landscaping in this new parking area?
Well, we have not. I don't know if the civil engineer has shown it to date. I did not see it.
We see nothing.
Okay, good.
That is something the board will discuss when we go into executive session later. I also have another recommendation. And we've requested this of other applicants as part of an approval. I would recommend, my other fellow board members may say the same thing, we would recommend that you put steel bollards around the transformer to protect it, because all you need is a truck to back into it, or a car. And your facility will be shut down.
Okay, agreed. I can confirm that back to you in writing. I agree with that.
Well, we'll be discussing that as part of the executive session, and we may make it a requirement.
If the board should decide to approve the application, the application would then go through the fire marshal, probably the health department, through DPW, through all the different departments, and that may be a fire marshal requirement for the bollards.
Good, good. Other board members have questions of the applicant?
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would just like, for the record, to let you know that all of the abutting neighbors have been notified.
Good.
Sure you mail those green cards into us, or mail proof of mailing into the office here?
Sure.
Thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
So I had a question. So the facility itself, there's already a few variances on it today, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so it seemed, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is the need for additional parking because the facility has, has it expanded? Or were there any of the variances? All right, let me try to explain something differently. It seems like you need a lot more space than you had, obviously. And I'm just wondering if the, any of the variances that were put in place before dictated the amount of spots you need or limited them?
I think part of the answer, and I'd like Jay to address, this is a two-part answer. I'd like to address part of it. I think some, what I see in a lot of these facilities is that the staffing ratio of three to one is heavier than what we used to see. And I've been in the business 30 years. It's heavier than what we used to see 20 years ago, where it was five or six to one. So you have a heavier staff requirement now than you would then. And a lot of that is just the way the codes have been administered by the state health departments over the years. So that's part of what's contributing to the congestion. Jay, do you have any good answers?
Another issue with the congestion is just the location in relation to where it is, being right next to the hospital. I know historically, this building has been much larger than what it is. It was roughly over 200 beds in the past, and we've downsized since then. And before, there used to be shared parking with the hospital back in the day. But things have changed since then and causing us to be in the condition where we are today.
Okay, and then maybe, Aileen, this is a question for you. But any of the variances that were on the property prior, was it, was it to expand the footprint of all, at all? Meaning that like, did they, did they get a variance to build into part of the land that should have been for parking spaces? So meaning that we've actually created this problem by giving them a variance in the past? Or is it something different?
Now, there was a variance in 1982 for the rear yard setback to add two stories to the existing building and increase the coverage on, and it says to continue the operation of a healthcare facility not having the required parking spaces.
And that was before my time.
So what was that last piece, Aileen, about the parking spaces?
The 1982 variance allowed this two-story addition and an increase in lot coverage to continue a healthcare facility not having the required parking.
Okay. Got it. So basically, like, we allowed the expansion and didn't require them to add parking at the time. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. Got it. I don't have any more questions.
I'm sorry, there's numerous other variances before that. They go back to, oh, my goodness. There's about eight of them here. They start in 1960. And then there's one in 63, 64, 67, 69, 70, 71, another 71, and 1972. All for various variances for the D-zone regulations to allow the property as a convalescent home. Additions.
So is there anything about this building that is conforming?
No, it's granted by variance.
Okay.
There is an addition of a new service, dialysis. And who's being served by that addition?
So we petitioned to the state to open up a hemodialysis center on our property, which was gonna be on the west wing of the facility. Currently, we felt with the certain environment that we're in, that it would be best to provide this service to the residents of Norwalk. This is going to require us to have inpatient residents, residents that are currently in our facility to be transported to and from. We have not decided whether or not we are going to do outpatient services as of yet. If we did decide to move in that direction, we would be looking to offer valet services to meet.
That's not, just to be clear, that's not allowed under the regulations?
Okay.
You can only do dialysis for residents of that facility currently there. Not even as outpatients. If you needed, if you needed to have that service, then you would be required to get an amendment to the zoning regulations. I mean, essentially, at that point in a D-zone, you're running a commercial operation versus a healthcare facility. So it's strictly for residents that are currently there.
Got it.
If I may, how would, let's say it was granted this variance, how would it be police to stop, let's say it was just for the residents there, and then it opens up to, I mean, once it's granted, there's nothing the city can do. Is that correct? If it was open to the public or dialysis?
Give them a notice of violation, that they're in violation of the zoning regulations, sure.
Any other questions of the applicant?
No, but I do think that we need to remember about the dialysis, and then we need to make sure we add language.
And that'll be part of our discussion. We would have to make sure that we limit the use to inpatient users.
Well, we limit it partly because that's what the zoning regulation requires.
Exactly. I think we'd just be reiterating the obvious.
Nope.
Okay. Is there anyone else participating in the meeting that wishes to speak in favor of this application?
Mr. Chairman, we received a letter from Three Bedford Avenue LLC. It's very brief. If you'd like, I'll read it.
Please read it into the minutes.
We are the property owner of 214, 16, 18, and 20 Bedford Avenue. This letter expresses that we have no objection to the proposed variances for reduced lot area coverage and support the new parking lot expansion for the abutting property located at 23 Prospect Street, Casino Care at Norwalk. We expect an increase in the size of the parking area for the facility will allow them to provide care to a greater number of patients without creating undue burden. Sincerely, Three Bedford Avenue LLC, P.O. Box 692, Norwalk, Connecticut.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter in favor of the application? Well, hearing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Well, hearing none, I will call this item closed, and we will move on.
Mr. Chairman, for housekeeping purposes, can you call the roll, please?
Okay.
We do, we do have a secretary. We do have a secretary, I sent an email, and she's just asking that we please call the roll.
Okay, Lee Levy, chairman. Andy Conroy.
Greg Rasher? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Andy?
Andy Conroy, secretary.
Chris?
Present, Chris Gavere-Lee is present.
Okay. Got him, drawing a picture.
Ted Diesel is present as well.
I'm sorry, Ted. And Greg Rasher?
Hey, guys.
Stand out and then decr-
Okay, we have five board members that are seated this evening.
Thank you.
We got Greg, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is 20-0220-03, Richard Gilhuli.
Ready to go?
Yes.
Variance for after-the-fact expansion of a non-conforming, single-family house within the front setback. Thirty feet required, 13.7 existing. Section 118, 340(c) in a B-residence zone. Property is at 28 Abbotson Street, District 3, Block 24, Lot 39. And the applicant is requesting a variance to legalize an expansion that was done as part of a 2018 permit. However, in contravention of the regulations. Background, a zoning permit was issued in September of 2018 for a second-story addition. As part of that renovation, the application applicants expanded the existing front porch to make the building square. The work was never approved by staff and was not discovered until the final as-built was submitted. In addition, the applicants constructed a portico within the setback that was not permitted either. The application was originally scheduled for the February 2020 public hearing. However, the applicant failed to notify the abutters as needed. The scheduling of the public hearing has been further delayed by the applicant at his request. Staff analysis and findings. The new proposal includes the removal of the portico, and the entry will be inset into the building. The owner has made a substantial investment in the property, and it is on the market. This, however, does not negate the compliance, the need for compliance with the regulation. Perhaps the error by the investor can be attributed to a lack of knowledge and the understanding of non-conformities. The applicant has failed to make good argument for zoning hardship. Failure to understand the regulations is not in itself a hardship. He has expanded the footprint into the setbacks in violation of the regulations. And you can call the applicant.
Okay. So the applicant can come forward and identify themselves.
Good evening, my name is Oscar Ovayi, I'm representing Mr. Richard Gilhuli. And basically, as you already said, we are asking for a variance of 2.3 feet at the front yard. So, can I share my screen?
Sure.
So. Basically, this is the original survey two years ago in 2018, before the addition of the house. So these 16 feet was the existing setback. So it was a non-conformity here. And they wanted to create a second floor here on top of the front porch. This is the existing condition two years ago. As you can notice here, there is not sidewalk here. I want to explain that, so that's existing, now the that was the former condition. Now, the existing condition is this, and this is the portion of the house that went 2.3 feet into the setback. This line, red line, is the line of the former footprint. And this is the existing condition now. Basically, the owner said that when they removed the existing porch, the foundation, they realized the foundation was just rubble, and it was not good for a second-floor addition. So they decided to put a new foundation. It was their first mistake because they didn't ask for a permit for that foundation. The foundation was not on the original permit. And so, based on what the owner expressed, the, since there is not sidewalk here, the contractor, the guy who was doing the the foundation, took the 16 feet from the street, and he didn't realize he was getting into the setback, so. That's why he brought these 2.3 feet into the setback. Now, what we are proposing, the owner understands that pushing these 2.3 feet will be a really huge expense for him. He's waiting for this issue to be solved, so he can move into the house, but he doesn't have a certificate of occupancy yet. So what he wants to propose is removing the existing portico, first of all, and second, having this entry recessed, two feet, six inches, to the house. So this would be the front elevation. He understands that doesn't fix the problem 100%, but it's something that he wants to propose to show his intention of solving the issue somehow. He has letters from the neighbors, support of variance, and basically, he knows they made a lot of mistakes here during the construction of this project. So basically, this is the way he's proposing to remediate the issue. But basically, that's all.
Well, I mean, this is certainly a good step in the right direction to, you know, ease a problem. You know, yeah, I think there are some construction issues that will have to be addressed, but that's not something we need to deal with here. I think you also need to look at the topography to see if this porch or the landing in front of the recess requires railings. But that's a field condition, it's certainly not shown on your drawings. So advise that that be checked. Other than that, I have really no other questions. Anything from other board members?
Let me ask staff a real quick question. Is there anything not in the front of the house that is problematic from the apartment's point of view?
I would have to look at the plans again, but I believe that the only thing that is not in compliance from what I recall is just that expansion into the front setback.
Okay, thank you.
My memory serves me right. The the building from two years ago was actually extended on the left side and the right side by about a foot. Is that correct, Aileen? So it's pretty, we're looking at pretty much the same thing that we denied two years ago, at this point, I mean.
There was indentations on every side of the house, that's right.
So you're proposing that just the front portico is pushed back, recessed into the building, but that the left and right side of the building will remain the same?
Yeah, moving.
Chris, that's accurate.
Yeah, moving these or the sides, it's gonna be a huge project, basically.
Interesting.
Even though this is.
The portico goes and the door gets recessed back into the building, but the left and right sides stay straight? Right? Yeah, okay.
That's our proposal. At least, we understand that that's just a little portion of what should be recent. And the owner recognizes all the mistakes that he made. In fact, I did another project for him in Norwalk as well, and on that project, of course, he follows. He followed all the requirements and setbacks, because he knows.
Are you talking about the property at Three Bedford?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that was also very difficult. And at this point, I don't believe it has a CEO, so you may not want to go there.
Okay.
Oh, any other questions from the board?
Just so I understand the summary of this, I don't think I was in the original conversation. We're saying the front is in the setback, and both sides are in the setback as well?
They expanded the entire front of the building out two feet forward and then a foot on either side. There was a little porch in the front that they basically modeled and expanded out.
Yeah, even though we have.
The red line that's shown there was the former footprint of that house.
Got it. All right, thank you.
This is something we denied without prejudice, allowing the applicant to come back with a workable solution. And it will be up to us tonight to decide if this is a workable solution.
But just to make sure that I got it right, the sidewalls of the building and the back of the building are not expanded outward.
They have not been, the deck is new.
Yeah, the deck on the back is there. But the house, the addition to the house was just done to the front.
Yeah, I see. All right. So the exact dimension in the front that you were asking for variance was two foot, what?
2.3 feet.
The reason it goes full width, Greg, is that the porch that was hung on the front of the house was indented a foot or so on each side. So when you level it off with the sides of the house, it makes it look like you're expanding it a lot, but in fact, not really.
Oh, so you're saying, you're saying just that little red part there is the part that expanded, not all the way down inside?
Yeah, he didn't expand it on the sides, other than in the front, but that wasn't.
I got it, thank you.
The problem is just the front itself extending.
Yeah, thank you for the clarity.
Quick question for Aileen, I think you said the first time it was proposed that it was about 100 square feet, larger than it should have been, is that correct? Do you remember?
Sorry, I don't recall.
No.
I could do a quick measurement if you'd like.
Chris, I believe you're pretty close on that.
It doesn't need to be exact, just so we have a good, you know, idea of what we're talking about.
It's close to 100, you're right.
Perfect, right, okay.
I don't have any more questions.
Yeah, that's all for me.
Okay, is there anyone else participating this evening that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Okay, hearing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak against this application? Hearing none, I will close this this application, and we will move on to our third application this evening. We are looking at item number 200820-0110 Willard LLC -FD Spin Willard LLC. Andy, you're up. Andy?
You're on mute, buddy.
Andy?
I think he said the application should be approved.
There we go. Yeah, when I was putting my mouse over the unmute, it kept disappearing. I figured out what it was. Variance to allow wall signage section 118, 1294A2 and 118, 1294B1. Sign letters at 36 inches versus 24 allowed, and height 51 feet versus 20 feet allowed for self-storage facility in Business Number 2 Zone. Property located at 10 Willard Road, District 5, Block 17, Lot 2. Applicant is requesting variances to allow two wall signs at proposed self-storage facility. Each sign is proposed higher in larger letters than relations currently allowed. The zoning commission approved the self-storage facility and the apartment complex on this eight-acre site. The zoning regulation is allowed for two, and this is analysis and finding by the staff. The zoning regulation is allowed for two wall signs with 24-inch letters up to 20-foot high. The proposal is for 36-inch letters up to 51 feet high. The applicant has provided renderings that are a bit deceiving as the site is accessed off Willard Road, not Westport Avenue. The existing tree canopy and landscaping are required as part of the CVS and TD Bank site plan approvals. Location of the building and design was of the applicant's choosing. The facility, while setback 270 feet from Westport Avenue, is only accessed off of Willard Road. With today's technology, drivers rely less on signage and more on smartphones and GPS. The applicant's claim that pedestrians need to read larger letters is irrelevant. Pedestrians will seldom access this site. The signage facing Strawberry Hill is excessive, and the applicant should consider eliminating it from the request. Go ahead.
Will the applicant please step forward and identify themselves?
Thank you, I'm Adam Blank of Woski, Rosenk question and Kuryansky, attorney for the applicant. Our office is in Stanford, I live here in Norwalk. With me tonight are Jason Enters and Brian Dietz, representatives and owners, developers of the property, as well as Ray Sullivan, the architect on the project. If I can share my screen.
Please go ahead.
Okay, so just a quick overview on the site at 10 Willard Road. This is us here. The CVS, we're on Westport Avenue, it's right here. This is CVS, TD Bank. The CVS, we're on Westport Avenue is right here. This is CVS, TD Bank. Itoros and I think Blinds to Go, Petco, that little deli, or Pet Smart, one or the other. There's a deli in there. You're probably all familiar with this stretch of Westport Avenue. The existing building on the site was, it was the old Frontier Maintenance and Storage Facility. My clients, the developers have, are now closed, they either have closed or will be closing on the property this week. We've recently obtained zoning approvals to put an apartment complex on the rear portion of the site. And so apartment complex back here on the site with self-storage facility on the front portion of the site. The self-storage facility is again, the whole building is set behind the strip mall on Westport Ave. So this is Itoros here. You can just make out the top portion of the self-storage facility behind Itoros. Different, slightly further along as you go on Westport Avenue, a little bit less of a view. As you kind of square up in front of TD Bank and the CVS, you can see this is the self-storage building just peeking out behind TD Bank. And what you may or may not be able to make out is right here, there's a little bit of white. That would be our permissible wall sign. So we are allowed a wall sign. It has to be 20 feet high, no higher, with lettering that's two feet tall. We're 270 feet setback from Westport Avenue. And again, as you see predominantly behind a strip mall, making it impossible for anyone to see our site or to see any signage to know where we are located. So what we've liked to do, this is the, the signage that would be permissible under the reg. We'd like to bump that sign up higher on the facade of the building so that it's actually visible from Westport Avenue and increase the lettering height from 24 inches to 36 inches. Again, we're allowed two wall signs on this site. We're not asking for any additional wall signs. We just want the wall sign, the purpose of having these wall signs is so that pedestrians, motorists and customers, potential and existing can actually see and identify the site. That can't happen based upon the topography of the site and the location of it. And so we, we, we just want to have a sign that can be seen. We're not asking for a, you know, I think over here on Itoros, it's not shown is that electronic changeable copy sign. We're not asking for anything like that, nothing fancy, just a, a pretty standard wall sign facing Westport Avenue. There's a very substantial need for the self-storage facility to have that sign in order for them to be able to move forward with the project. We, we did ask, we have asked for, and it is in front of you, a second variance for the wall sign that would face Strawberry Hill. We've, that would be on the survey, that sign is located right here on the property. Based on the feedback from staff, we, we, we are willing to sort of give up on that, that wall sign. So long as we're able to at least have one sign that folks can see here on Westport Avenue and get the variance to allow the 36 inch lettering with the 51 foot height on this wall sign. But we, we, you know, we need, we need something that customers can see. The technically, it's a variance of 1181294 subsections A2 and subsections B1 to increase the height and height of the sign and height, height of the lettering. The, if we don't have it, we anticipate that customers are not going to be able to easily locate us and be going back and forth on Westport Avenue, doing U-turns trying to find us. This is variances like the one that we're asking for have historically been granted by this board. And it's been on a case by case basis always, but there's a long history of similar requests being granted by this board. I want to go through some of those in just a couple of minutes. But I will say that again, the, the topog, the topographic limitations on the property do render it unique to other similarly situated properties in the business two zone, making a variance appropriate. We've given you in the narrative that was submitted with our application, the legal authority for that. I will repeat that now. But our property, the, this site has the, the back of the property, and I should mention as part of our approvals through zoning, and we went through zoning and planning and conservation commission. We've agreed to place a large portion of this, the, the site of two, two plus acres of the site into a conservation easement. And we're doing substantial upgrades for water quality and landscaping on the site. But this is residential back here and back this way. And making a signage facing the back of the site or signage facing the apartment buildings sort of useless or signage facing out this way towards Willard goes to nowhere. It serves no purpose. The go back. Yeah, I'll leave this view up. Again, as I mentioned, that there have been other similar requests by property owners almost across the street at 526542 Westport Avenue where the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is. This board granted a variance for that property. Allowing the, the wall, the permissible wall sign to go from 20 feet high to 31.25 feet high and the lettering from 24 inches to 33 inches. And you, you folks gave us your reasoning that the Bed Bath &amp; Store faces backwards from the street and is located a significant distance beyond the street. The applicant, and this was the language of the board, the applicant has a right to a wall sign for legitimate business identification purposes, but given its orientation and location on the property, it's precluded from doing so. The, so the proposed sign is a reasonable alternative to give them legitimate business identification. And of course, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond moved into that site knowing that that was the space that they were going to occupy, knowing that the site was, you know, that they were set back in that odd corner in the back end of the site. Similarly, 33 Fair Street, which is I think a great example. That, this board granted a variance for those folks, that was a self-storage facility. And the permissible wall sign faced residential neighborhood. And therefore they sought to change the wall sign to a different side of the facility, increase the size, the height from 20 feet to 53 feet, and increase the lettering from 24 inches to 30 inches because the sign that they wanted that did not face the residential neighborhood was going to face Route 7 and would serve no purpose at 20 feet high because it wouldn't be visible to anybody. Again, this board granted that variance request, finding the rationale being that the applicant demonstrated the hardship in this instance as a business, it's allowed signage for identification purposes. Similarly, the Walmart on Connecticut Avenue was granted a variance by this board, allowing their wall sign to be higher than 20 feet. Rationale from the board was that the distance from Connecticut Avenue and the configuration of the building warranted the, the higher site heightage, the higher sign heightage. So it was increased in height. Similarly, the Costco on Connecticut Avenue, this board granted them a variance to allow that sign to be placed higher and larger than the regs permit. Based on the rationale, the distance from Connecticut Avenue and the configuration of the building itself. Similarly, the Pet Smart on Connecticut Avenue, this board granted them a variance, finding a hardship in the design of the building and the way that it was laid out to allow the sign to be placed higher with, with larger lettering. The wall, there's again, another wall sign higher and larger lettering than the regs permit. The Lowe's on Connecticut Avenue also wall sign variance granted by this board based upon the grade change on the property and the distance from the Lowe's store to Connecticut Avenue. The Toys R Us on Connecticut Avenue, this board granted a variance for those folks for a wall sign placed higher up on that building on it. And then the regs permit. And that was considered a hardship due to the configuration of the lot. 20 Glover Ave, also that's Merritt Rivers. Again, this board granted them additional wall signs, larger signs and higher signs, given the scale of the development, types of uses and topography of the site. And to allow folks to be able to identify the site without impacting traffic. The Stop and Shop on Main Avenue at 380 Main Avenue, you've given them a number of variances. One of those variances was to allow them to go from their two permitted wall signs to 11 signs, increasing the letter size for those wall signs because of the rebranding of the company and the distance between Connecticut Ave, or Main Ave and the Stop and Shop. That same Plaza, the total line, this board granted them a sign variance to increase the wall sign for the lettering size and the height of the sign. Because of quote hardship would be that the other properties in the plaza are in a similar situation, have larger signs. A smaller sign would be detrimental and a hardship to the property. Down the street from us, there's that Wendy's. That on 163 Westport Avenue, you folks granted a variance for them as well for a wall sign, allowing it to be higher than allowed in the regs, finding a hardship because of the elevation on the property in relation to Westport Avenue. Finally, at Stu Leonard's, also at 55 Westport Avenue, this board granted a number of variances on that property. Note, I'll just bring up that they have a, at least one for a wall sign, lettering, allowing higher lettering and a higher wall signs than permissible under the regs. All for similar rationale than we're asking for. And again, on all of these ones that I've just listed off for you, those are all projects that were either new construction or a new owner or a new tenant coming in, recognizing that the regulations intend to allow for a wall sign so that the businesses can be identified. But there are those instances where the properties are so far set off of the main road or there's, there are grade change or there's trees or a strip mall in front of them, making the permissible wall signs useless, absent a variance for height and lettering. And that's sort of, we see that as being no different from our situation. And, and for the self-storage user, it's, it's a, it's a very real significant need that they have a wall, a wall sign that will be visible from Westport Avenue. So again, we'd, we'd hope that you would allow us to, we'll, we'll take one if, if that's all that we can get. Because that's what we really need. We need at least one wall sign up to 51 feet high with 36 inch lettering facing Westport Avenue to allow the development to proceed. It's a substantial need and a substantial hardship based on the topography of the site. And we think it's a modest request. It fits with the surrounding area and otherwise complies with the zoning standards. We ask that you approve the variance. We do have Ray Sullivan here, the architect, as well as the property owners. They do not have a formal presentation prepared for you, but if you have any questions of them or of me, we would all be more than happy to do our best to answer those.
Well, Adam, my, my first question is, will the letters be white as you've represented in the rendering? And are they illuminated?
Jason, can you unmute if they let you and maybe speak to that?
Yeah, the letters would be white and they would be backlit.
Okay, what, what hours will they be illuminated?
That's a good question. You know, to be honest, I don't know when people normally shut off their lights, but we'd shut them off when everybody else does. If there's a regulation for that, we would certainly follow it.
What are, what are the proposed hours of operation?
It's open till 10, 9, 9:30 or 10, I can't remember. I can get you that.
Well, I would think that the, the, the lit sign would be probably appropriate to have it shut off in hours of non-operation.
Sure.
Any other board members have questions?
I only asked that they scroll forward a little bit in the photos and then scroll back again because I was missing some of the views of the building like that one. I presume it's visible between the space between the other buildings. It looks to be. How tall is it?
The building's about, I believe it's 52 feet to the parapet.
Yeah, to the top of the parapet, it's 52 feet. And it's that high because one of the things that the zoning commission asked us to do was to put solar on the building. So the parapet's hiding all of the solar panels on the roof.
And, and I mean theoretically, if we didn't put solar on the roof, we could angle the roof in a way that would allow us without a variance to try to somehow sneak higher signs in there. But we're happy to, to put solar in, but we do want to be able to have a wall sign again, that's, that's going to be.
No, that's, I think that's fine.
So you're representing something on, along the top. What is that? Is that 36 inch letters or 24 inch?
Those are, those are 36 and that's at the 51 feet. And of note, as, as you, if, if Adam scrolls through these views, there are places where you actually, when it's at 51 feet, like here, you, you, you won't actually see the entire sign. So there's a, there's a slot where you will see it. That's, yeah, that was when it was at, that's when it's at 20 feet. You can't see it at all. And that's 20 feet. From.
The driveway view where you got a good look at it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And that was, and that was the original reason why we were asking for the, the west side as well.
Yeah, that's the view I was looking for right there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Adam, do you think you could read back the list of variances on those signs again? That was, that was a joke. No, I don't have any more questions.
Chris, anything from you?
No, I mean, we've been pretty flexible with, with signs. I mean, Adam said seven or eight. I, I wasn't on the board when all these were approved, but even the Marriott Hotel a couple of years ago, when it was the first time I was on the board. I think that's similar to this in some sense.
I didn't mention you guys did approve within the last, I don't know, four months. There was a, a ground sign about a door or two up on Westport Avenue from us that was similarly a building that was set back off of Westport Avenue. And you allowed them to, to place their signage on the neighborhood.
The ballet one?
It was an, it was the ballet one. It was technically an off-premises sign, but, but it was the same idea. Let them, let their customers actually know where they are.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Can I ask about the, about the vegetation that's out there now? Will that sign be visible with those trees as they are?
So, so what, what you're seeing in the renderings is, is accurate as to what is there. So you will see the sign in, in portions of, of your drive-by or your walking by. Certainly much more than you would if it's at 20 feet. And again, the, you know, there will be spots where it's, where it's obscured slightly. And that again, was the reason why we were asking for the west side as well, just to give us a, a better chance of being able to identify ourselves.
I, I have a few Google Earth photos here that the, the trees look pretty tall. I don't know how how the building is going to be up behind those trees and, and the signage visible.
So the, the trees, the, the trees in the rendering, Adam, if you can go back. If you look on Google Earth, the trees that are on our property, which are probably the ones that you're thinking of, are going to come down. But all of these trees that currently exist on CVS and TD Bank's property need to stay. So if you were looking at Google Earth right now, there would be a couple, and they're basically weed trees, but they're very tall.
The zoning commission was okay with you taking all those trees down?
There's only two or three there. And yeah, they were fine.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll look at their approvals and just confirm that.
Is there any member, any member of the public that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak in opposition of this project? Well, I hear nobody coming forward and I will close this item. And we will go into. executive session and discuss these projects.
Executive session? I don't think so.
Oh, no. Technical term?
Real technical, legal.
Legal, okay. We'll go into discussion of these items. And we'll do them in reverse order. We'll start with 2008, 20-01, 10 Willard. Comments from the board on this? Well.
Want to start? I'm happy to. It seems like we've been pretty. Sorry, say that again?
No, just go ahead. I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, it feels like we are fair and lenient. You know, regarding signage. I, I feel like I'm okay with the sign in the front. I'd love to get everyone's opinion on the other one. Um, I know that Lee, you had mentioned before about like turning the sign off at a certain time of night. I'm not, I, I'm not sure that makes sense. I'm sure there's plenty of other businesses on the, the main road there that have signs that are lit up and are, are not business, because it's, it's an advertisement whether you are open or not. So I'm happy to entertain that, but I'm not, I feel like that would be the only sign in that neighborhood that has to be turned off at a certain time. Unless I'm mistaken.
Well, I was just basically asking, asking a question. My biggest objection is the sign facing Strawberry Hill, where there is no access to this building. Uh, I think it's unnecessary illumination. And I don't think the sign on the building, even at that height and size, is all that appropriate. Certainly willing to grant approval for the sign that faces Westport Avenue in the size and location. And I'm not necessarily fixed on time of illumination.
On that one, is is the sign that's facing Strawberry, is that? And maybe I missed it. It's just, is that also elevated with the larger letters and illuminating as well? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with you on that. Like what would be, if they wanted to keep a sign there, they, are they allowed to, given the amount of signs that they have? And would it just meet the, the standard zoning requirement if they want to keep one there?
Well, that would be up to you. If you grant this variance, you may be able to condition it on that they have no additional signage or no signage facing Strawberry Hill. You could do that at 20 feet. So I don't think there's any purpose of having a sign facing Strawberry Hill. That would be in compliance with the 20 feet and the 24 inches.
I just kind of like the approval of Marriott.
If they're helping on having a sign on Strawberry Hill, could they live with the parameters 24 inches, 20 feet high?
That's up to you. If you want to give them both signs, you can certainly do that. But if you're giving them the big sign, you can ask for the concession that they don't have an additional sign facing Strawberry Hill.
I don't see the need for the sign on Strawberry Hill. I'm willing to grant them the larger letters and 51 feet facing Westport Avenue. I mean, this is putting up a sign, you know, for the sake of a sign. When we looked at Marriott in South Norwalk, the additional sign served a very specific purpose in directing or locating the hotel from the Norwalk, South Norwalk train station.
Yeah, as does the Doubletree sign as you approach Darien.
Exactly.
No, I agree with that. I just said if they, if they wanted to spend their money on a sign that I don't think they need, then I don't have a real problem with that, but I don't want it to be outside the zoning regulation. The one that I think should be outside the zoning regulation and consistent with all our other decisions is that single sign facing into Westport Avenue.
Chris and Todd, what do you guys think? You're on mute, Todd.
Thank you. So I think the sign facing Route 1 makes all the sense in the world in terms of granting the variance. Frankly, I don't know that signage gets to anybody, anyplace anymore. If you're going to look for a location, you're probably going to use some technology to get there. But I can see the need or the, the desire from the standpoint of just uh, public awareness to put the sign so the people on Route 1 can see it driving by. I don't see the need for the sign on Strawberry Hill. And I think it'd be a worth of, we'd be doing them a favor to, to, to suggest the sign out front. Yeah, while eliminating the sign on Strawberry Hill.
Chris, you're feeling?
I agree with what everyone said. I mean, we've been pretty flexible. The short time I've been on with the Marriott and then Bob's that took over Torres Arros, and then we added a few signs on Subaru. I mean, they're not all exactly the same, but I, I am in agreement with everyone else.
Okay. Uh, would somebody make a motion then?
Go for it, Chris.
Make a motion that we approve this sign facing Westport Avenue. With the 36 inch letters and 41 foot height.
51. 51.
51 foot height now.
And I'll add to that, that we do not permit signage on the side of the building facing Strawberry Hill.
I'm not sure. My, my opinion is that we, we don't approve the elevated one, lit up one. If they want to put a sign over there and conform, they can go right ahead, but I, I, I feel like my opinion, my opinion is that we approve the one in the front. And if they want to put one on the, on the side there and it conforms, like that's fine.
I would disagree with you.
It's probably a waste of money and I agree with Lee in terms of marketing sense, um, but also if it conforms, I don't have any reason for them not to do it.
Well, we can.
Should we make a motion?
That sign in there, somebody needs to second that motion. As stated.
Do we need to restate it without the contingency?
Yes.
Chris, you want to go again?
Oh, good. Well, uh, go ahead, Greg. I mean, you added the second part of that, so I'm, I'm in agreement with you, so I'll second it.
Uh, may I just hit the motion again? I'm sorry, can I just second Chris's or do we need to restate that, restate?
Do you want me to restate it?
Can I get you guys to wait one second? Just pause for a minute? Todd, where are you on the second sign? If it's permissible, 20 feet, 24 inches, and they can have it within the zoning regulation as it stands. And they want to waste their money putting it there. Do you have a problem with it being there?
No, I have no strong feelings about that. So if you're willing to absolutely go along, if it's the, yeah, if, if the motion says put up the sign that conforms, I'm good with that too.
Yeah, okay, no problem. So I'm not going for another huge sign, but a conforming sign would be okay. I just wouldn't think that they'd want to spend their money on it.
So do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I think Chris's original motion would suffice, wouldn't it?
Okay, somebody going to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion on the floor?
Aye.
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 Aye. I guess the motion passes 5-0.
Cool. Good luck, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to move on to Richard Gilhooly, 20, 28 Amundsen Street. Well, I think they've made an effort to comply. And I don't have a big issue with it at this point.
See, I don't feel hell bent to make them tear the front of the building down. I can live with it as is.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
I don't have a real strong opinion.
Let me just say, I'd be, I, I was intrigued by the, the history of this. And apparently this is the second time this person has been before this board.
Correct.
Uh, and this is the solution. Well, so my opinion is that the proposed solution is as little as they could offer and still convince the board that they're making a significant change. I thought the change was almost tiny compared to the errors that they made in building.
That's a very good point, Ted.
I'm, um, I'm kind of torn on this because nothing has really changed since two years ago. I mean, it's pretty much, we're looking at the same thing, just that the, the entrance is going to be pushed back a couple of feet. So, I mean, the crime, the punishment should fit the crime, I guess, and who wants, I don't want the gentleman to tear down a building. But at the same time, what has changed in two years? Not much. So I'm kind of torn on this one.
You know, and I don't even know if we're supposed to be considering this, but I was disappointed to hear that this isn't the only building challenge that we have. And, you know, we probably shouldn't pull it into it, but like, is this a systemic problem with this particular developer that, you know, bending the rules, operating by their own rules, I'm, I'm, I'm unsure. It, it's a little bit of a concern for me that, you know, we, we allow this. I mean, if I, I read the documents, like no, no survey was done until the whole thing was completed. I don't know.
I didn't file the changes with the building department. I mean, his list of violations is, you know, as long as my left arm. Um, I was certainly, I know I gave his representative a real dressing down at the first hearing. You know, Ted's comment that this is the least he could do. I mean, we could again deny it and ask him to come back with a solution that better answers the additional square footage that he built. You know, I, I have often joked that, you know, sometimes people should be told to take a chainsaw to their buildings to make them conform.
And we, well, I don't, I, I agree that the, the punishment, the ultimate punishment of telling this guy to tear it down is, is more than is necessary. But there's got to be a solution that comes closer to conformity than what he's, what they have proposed here.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have the power to find somebody like this.
Well, we can ask him to try again.
We certainly can.
So I would.
Basically though, that would, I mean, the only thing left for him would be to tear down the sides of the building. And I mean, that would be. And that's the only try again. Is that correct? I mean, there's no other options other than tearing down the whole side of the building.
So he's losing square, more square footage.
I mean, that's a, that's a fair point, Lee. Should we make the ingress equivalent to the amount of square feet? We can't make it, but just that the ingress matched the amount of square feet that is in violation. I don't know how big that would be, but.
We can ask that. I mean, right, right now, the area that he's giving up is 14, about 17 square feet, 18 square feet. He is in violation. Uh, I mean, in terms of square footage, substantially more. So we could just deny him and tell him to come back with a solution that is more appropriate in terms of the, the violation.
I see Andy over there thinking, how you feeling?
Greg, you were mentioning that you had to worry that the developer has a habit of doing this. Do we have other entrances with this developer doing?
Uh, Eileen threw out a lot of.
During the hearing, that he's doing another project that is nearing completion and they have yet to call for a zoning inspection.
No, they have called for a zoning inspection. They're not in compliance on that one either.
All right, I'm, I'm going along with you. Let's make the pain greater.
How do we want to state this?
Well, he can read the minutes. The minutes would reflect the, at least the concept of pushing the entrance further back. Actually. wider. But that the, the, but there's a rejection as what they've offered is too little. You'll see it.
Fine. Ted, would you like to make a, a motion on this?
I move we reject the application.
Without prejudice?
Is, is that the correct wording? Yes, yes, without, without prejudice.
It, it has to do with him paying Eileen or just the timing?
No, he'd have to make a whole new application. And then you have to look at it and make a determination whether it's significant enough that you want to hear that.
So the we, um, is a proper way to state this, and I think Ted was, was onto something here, is like, we, we deny. Um, I don't know if it's considered an appeal or a variance without prejudice. And we want them to come back with something that's more substantial, that, that it's close or equivalent to square feet gained. Uh, the square feet gained should be taken into account with the, I guess it's the egress of, or, or, I don't know, there's something like neutralizing the, the space gained with how they're addressing a particular challenge with the egress of the front door.
You can deny it without prejudice period. And then they read into it based on your condition here with, what you're looking for.
Sure. Todd, you want to go for it again?
I move that we deny the application without prejudice.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The board votes 5-0 to deny the application without prejudice.
I believe that the owner's representative is still on, so I'm sure he's, I hope he's listening and is understanding what, um, what you're looking for, but they can certainly talk to us next week, talk to the staff and we can relay the information.
They can just go to the YouTube link, right?
Sure.
Okay, moving on to item 20-0716-02, Kessena Carrot Norwalk. to item 20-0716-02, Cassena Carrot Norwalk.
I don't have a problem with them, generally speaking, adding more parking. I don't know if the amount of parking is appropriate. And I don't think I want them to start up a commercial operation.
I definitely don't want it to go beyond their current care of the patients and, you know, bar outside public from using their facility without being an in-house patient. What bothers me, excuse me, while I sleep. Should have hit the mute button. I'm disturbed by the lack of green space. This is going to be a sea of building and asphalt and I...
God bless you.
The applicant introduce trees and bushes if not in the parking area, elsewhere on the site, you know, to alleviate that apparent hard surface area. I think they also, and it'll be probably comments from other departments, protect the transformer with steel bollards.
Yep.
And the site plan needs to specifically show and indicate the ingress and egress to this parking area from Bedford Street. I had no frickin' idea when I was looking at the drawing and even on my site visit, how they were going to get there. So I think we make those recommendations and I'm good with that. I think they're beginning to outgrow their facility.
So the recommendation is the planting and the, what was the second one you said, Lee?
Bollards around the transformer.
Yep.
And...
The third one was indicating ingress, egress to the park.
Yes.
And that it be current patients only.
Right.
As residents of the facility, not, because patients can be outpatients as well. So it would have to be residents of that facility.
Okay.
Yeah, if we do, if we say that, though, we should say in conformance with current zoning regulations. Add that phrase in.
I think most of these spots are for the people that work there, right? I mean, there's like 60 people on staff.
These spots are for...
Yeah, right.
Well, I'll make a motion that we request the applicant to work with staff to provide as much landscaping, trees and bushes, as can be handled on the site along with bollards protecting the transformer and indication on the site plan that ingress and egress is through the adjoining property on Bedford Street.
And the addition of dialysis services that is limited to in-house patients as, and not commercial services as per current zoning regulation.
I mean, can we limit someone's business?
Not allowed in a D-zone.
Say that again?
Not allowed in a D-zone.
Allowed in a D-resident zone.
They would be operating a commercial business if they took in outside patients.
Right, so then you don't need to state that.
Well, we don't need to state it. But if we do state it, we should say it's in it as a result of current zoning regulation. So it doesn't look like we're creating our own rules.
I agree with Andy's statement. I think this day and age...
The property usage within the, good, Lee, I think you were going to say it. Go ahead.
I think we need to state that because in this day and age, we need to, you know, dot our i's and cross our t's because somebody, if we don't say it, will try to say, well, you never said that.
Therefore, we told you.
I mean, we could, we could say it a little bit differently in saying, you know, we grant this as long as it's within the current commercial use of de-zoning.
Not, no, non-commercial use.
Non-commercial, sorry.
Use in D-zone.
I think they might be cute with commercial use. I think requiring it to be in-house patients only being serviced with the dialysis unit is a smart phrase to stick in there.
Yeah, I agree with Andy and Lee. I think we need to be careful how we word this and it needs to be strong. Because I think Mr. Russell already mentioned valeting cars. So we don't want to get into that, so...
That's the point that I want to make, that they made in their application the statement that they wanted to be open to the Norwalk community. So I think you need to reiterate to them and in your resolution that this is not open to anyone other than the residents of the existing facility.
Okay, so we got...
I've been on the facility. It's a mess, so I agree with Eileen.
So we said, we have a motion that we could vote on, or?
We make the motion.
You don't have to say it again, and I think we know what to do.
Someone second it?
I'll second this one.
Greg, let's settle Greg first, because Greg was the one who objected. Are you okay with going along with what we proposed now?
Yeah, I'm okay with going along with it.
Okay.
And we've got a second.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic.
5-0, the board approves with modifications. And I will, oh, we have minutes to approve. Has everyone read through the minutes?
Yep.
I have no objection to the minutes. I found no, no problems with it.
Yeah, I breezed through them. I did not look at them carefully, but what I read was fine.
In agreement.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes of our July meeting?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Board votes to accept the minutes of the July meeting, 5-0. And would somebody make a motion to close the meeting?
I've moved that we adjourn.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, Eileen.
Very good.
Quick question.
Great night.
When are we going to see that tire place again? Is that on the agenda for next month?
That's done.
Oh, I thought there was a component of it. We said yes to some of it and no to others.
Right, and they haven't appealed as far as I am aware.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's what it's acting, their appeal. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Take care, buddy. Bye.
Bye.